Right. Good afternoon and welcome to the afternoon session of the Landmarks Preservation Commission's public hearing and public meeting of Tuesday, September 10th, 2024. We will be resuming this afternoon with items number, public hearing item number seven, and I will turn it over to Corey Harala to take us through the afternoon items.
Thank you. Public hearing item number seven is LPC 24-08423, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan, block 530, lot 36, 338 to 340 Bowery, NoHo Historic District Extension. This is a late arts and craft style lodging house built in 1928 to 29. The application is to repaint windows, replace doors, modify openings, and install signage.
Hello, everyone. My name is James Cott. I'm the owner's rep for the project located at 33 Bowery. So this location is between Bond and Great Jones on the Bowery. It's directly across from the Bowery Hotel. There are some historic photos showing tax photos from 1920s and 1940s. Here's photos of the site condition today in the general neighborhood landscape. Here is the existing building as it stands today. Here are some photos of the existing storefront. And as part of our, part of a work for this project, the first change that we are proposing to make is to paint all the existing window frames and fire escape doors to be black, so that is consistent with the historically black storefront on the ground floor. As you can see, historically, the window frames were white above the first floor and the storefront was black. But as it stands today, over the years, it's been painted and it's partially painted red and green. Here's some, just to give you guys some context in the neighborhood of other buildings and actually on the block, so in the immediate vicinity. In the first photo to the left, you can see our building, which is to the right, and the building next door to the south of us has black windows and a black storefront. The photo in the middle is the Bowery Hotel, which is directly across the street. They, that was a ground up building. That was also, they also have a black storefront with black frame windows as well. Just down the block on 327 Bowery, photo to the right, is known as Bowery Electric, and again, black storefront and black windows. Here's a rendering of our building with the black windows that we are proposing to be consistent with the black storefront. As you can see from rendering, again, the buildings adjacent to us to the left and to the right also have black or dark colored windows and storefront as well. So it'll be in keeping with the elevation of that streetscape. The second change that we are requesting is to make the storefront doors, which were historically wood, to be metal, to be consistent with the, the rest of the storefront. The, the reason that we are requesting it to be changed to metal is because our contractor has actually reached out to three or four different millwork door manufacturers, and all of them came back claiming that they will not warranty the work if we were to match the existing profile of the doors historically. And this is because with the size of the door, which is up to eight feet, they're all requiring seven and a half inch styles. The historic doors have four inch styles on the sides, so it's a much more streamlined profile. So if we were to go with the wider styles, obviously, the glazing within the door will be significantly reduced, and we thought that would be a larger impact to the overall aesthetic on the storefront. So the metal doors, they will allow us to, you know, achieve what's the historic aesthetic in terms of the glazing profile percentages while also maintaining the structural integrity of the doors, so they won't sag over time. We shall see, you know, in the photo to the left, you can see the wood doors sagging pretty, pretty poorly over time. This is a photo of, of new storefront that we've put in recently. So this, you know, this building is currently on the construction. This was approved at staff level previously. So this has been installed currently, just waiting for the glazing, but we've left the opening for the doors, which will hopefully be determined today. We're also asking for a minor change, which is actually brought up during the community board hearing. One of the community board members had asked, had made a comment and asked if we would consider aligning the windows, the door glazing with the glazing of the windows in the storefront, which our architect has drawn here, and we thought that was a great idea. She thought it would improve the aesthetic, and that was something that we agreed with and conceded with as well. And just to, again, give you some more context to what it was before, if you look at the photo on the left, you can see that the glazing framing for the doors did not align with the rest of the storefront. So we thought that minor change would, we were happy to make that happen. And we hope you guys agree as well. So this is the, the south storefront, and this is the larger north storefront, showing the alignment of the door glazing with the window glazing. The third request that we're asking for is an exterior blade sign. So on the left hand photo, you can see historically, the building had a lit sign that projected from the building. We also have a blurb about the current code that allows us, and we've designed the signage to comply with current code for the NoHo district. It allows us to project 18 inches from the building and allows us to have a sign up to 40 feet within the elevation of the building. So here's a colored historic photo of the building in the 1940s to give you guys a little more context of what it looked like before. Obviously, as you can see, the projection was much longer into the street previously. Here's some examples of other lit signs in the NoHo district in the 1940s that we were able to pull up. This is a building on Bowery between East Third and East Fourth Street, so right across the street. You can kind of see the green blade sign. That was a lit sign back in the day. Here's another lit sign in the NoHo Historic District in the 1940s, Amafa Yet, so a block away between Bond and Great Jones. Here's another example of a property on Bowery between Houston and Prince. And just another example of some lit signs on the Bowery in the 1940s as well. So this is the sign that we're proposing. It's about 75 inches tall. It's going to sit on the second floor level, so it's not going to go up to the 40 feet. And it'll only project 18 inches from the building, of which three inches is the bracket, so the actual sign itself will be 15 inches by 75 inches. Again, here's a rendering of the elevation with the lit sign. As you can see, this helps provide the scale of the sign relative to the building. You know, given the size of the building, we felt that the sign was a bit subdued and in keeping with the neighborhood, given that it wasn't an extra large sign that you would find on Broadway, for example. Again, only an 18 inch projection. That's less than the height of a full sized window on the facade. And the last change we are requesting is a minor one. So in the bottom right hand corner, you can see highlighted in red, we are required to remove, of course, a brick within the facade to make for head clearance for the second means of egress from the cellar. This is actually an existing opening for the second means of egos for the building. However, the stair itself is not code compliant because the slope doesn't meet the rise run that's required by DOB. Here's a section drawing of the staircase that leads from the sidewalk into the cellar level, drawn by our architect. Again, it shows the head clearance height that's needed. And accordingly, we needed to remove some brick within the facade to, to make way for that head clearance. And that concludes the end of our presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there questions, commissioners? Yes, Commissioner Jefferson.
You want me to decide whether you should paint the windows black or white, right? And then you give me a picture of a night view to compare with the historic picture. Go to the historic one, the white. Keep going, keep going.
Is this the, you want to look at the historic?
The historic, the historic picture. That, okay. And I look at the white there and the black below, and I say, gee, happy building. And then you show me a picture of a dark building at dusk and depending on black, and you say I should compare this to that. It's not a fair comparison. I don't get it.
Daytime view.
In a daytime view?
It's not fair.
Yeah, just, go ahead, Commissioner Ginsburg.
Just following up on that.
Yeah.
It would seem to me the simple thing to do is look at the historic picture. I'm glad you're, the pink and green are not appropriate, but putting white up on the upper floors and then black in the, on the ground floor, is there a reason you didn't do that?
So, you know, our team believed, we were really striving for more uniformity with the storefront, because the storefront was black, to have the windows black as well. And just considering the, the context of the neighborhood, both adjacent buildings also have a black storefront, black windows, and the building across the street also have the same look. So, you know, we did this because we thought it's more consistent for the building to tie it in altogether, but then also it's consistent with the immediate fabric of the neighborhood on that block as well.
I, I just had a question about the white color, because this historic photo looks to be like a 1970s photo, right? It's not, so the building was built in 1928 as an arts and crafts style building. And when I think of arts, and it may be that it was white with the white trim above, when I think of arts and crafts, I think of more earthy tones. So I just wondered, you had the 1940 tax photo that was colorized. Did you put the color into that? Or was there some other basis for determining that white was the historic color?
No, so we, we went to a website that categorized all the historic photos in 1940s of all of Manhattan, and they had an option to colorize it based on a guest input from, I'm not sure how they determined.
How do they determine?
Feature and.
They caught a test on site. You can see.
No, but how does the, how does the municipal archives determine the color when they colorize the photo? Have you done any scraping on the frames to sort of see what's underneath?
Scraping. I can show you. It's at the end of our slide here. So this is a scraping that we did on the window frames. As you can see, immediately below the red paint is, is white. And that was, those were the only two layers that we found on the building. So there were no intermediate layers that we had discovered.
Okay, yes, Commissioner Ginsburg.
This may be more a note for staff, but in future, if you do colorize, don't have a problem, you should also give us the black and white, so we can see what it, what it looks like.
Well, there is also the black and white photo as well. Yeah. I had that also in the beginning of the presentation. I did provide both for you guys to take in. So very first slide of our presentation. So the one on the right.
Okay, so they're pretty.
So this one is more in 1920s. You can tell by, by the vehicles on the street there, it's an early rendition of the building.
There's definitely a light palette there. Okay. All right. Any other questions? Okay. Let's see if we have testimony and we may have questions after that. And I'll note that there's no one in the hearing room to speak on this item. So I'll turn it to Gregory to see if we have any remote participants.
Thank you, Chair Carroll. We have a couple of hands raised in our attendees list. The first we'll be hearing from is Richard Moses from the Lower East Side Preservation Initiative. Richard Moses, I am promoting you to panelist right now. And please unmute your line and state your name for the record. You'll have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Good afternoon, commissioners and Chair Carroll. My name is Richard Moses. I'm with the Lower East Side Preservation Initiative, also known as LESBI. As a matter of policy, LESBI takes a liberal approach to storefront replacements, as over the last two centuries storefronts within the Lower East Side have been altered or replaced by generations of immigrants and their offspring, each making their own mark on the building and the streetscape. For this reason, we do not object to the storefront work and the signage installation work outlined in the reference certificate of appropriate application. And this, I mean, in this certificate of appropriate application. However, although we are sympathetic to the need for the proper egress from the cellar, we ask that the staff verify whether there is any alternative to the proposed egress that would allow for the facade brickwork below the windows to be retained. Finally, we have no objection to painting the upper story windows black, as we, we feel that black is kind of a color that you would see in this period for metal windows, as well as we feel that it does not diminish the building's architectural historic character, and actually will make it visually harmonize better with the ground story. So thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you so much for your testimony. Next up, we'll be hearing from Chloe Gregoire from the Village Preservation. Chloe Gregoire, I'm promoting you to panelist right now. Please unmute your line and state your name for the record. You'll have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Good day, commissioners. My name is Chloe Gregoire, and I am speaking on behalf of Village Preservation. Thank you for the opportunity to testify. Village Preservation is otherwise fine with this application, but finds the internal illumination of the proposed bracket sign to be inappropriate. It could instead be externally lit or utilize some other technique that is more compatible with historic signage. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. I do not see any other hand raised, so I will note for the record that Manhattan Community Board Two recommends denial of the black paint on the window frames and the fire escape doors on floors two, three, and four, and advocates for the top three floors to be painted in a soft white as seen in the historic photos. We further suggest that should the fire escape doors ultimately need to be replaced, that they be replaced with partially glazed doors, and denial of the front door material from wood to steel, noting that the effect of the proposed changes in material to the signage, lighting, and doors have the aggregate effect of homogenizing the facade to a point where it loses its defining presence within the NoHo Historic District, denial of the five brass lighting fixtures due to the lack of meaningful reference within the district, denial of the blade sign due to its lack of meaningful reference within the district, and suggests that the applicant look to the historic district photos for signage inspiration, approval of the bronze plaque at the entry, and approval of the cellar gates and the removal of the three additional courses of brick. And with that, I'll bring it back to you, Chair Carroll.
Okay, thank you. So I think we've heard some positive supportive testimony, some questions about the eager store, and then the community board had a longer list of, of concerns. So would you like to address any of those?
Sure. I think just a comment on the community board's concerns about the color of the windows. Again, I'm glad to have received support for the black windows, because again, to our primary concern was just really homogenizing the building storefront with the rest of the building and also the fabric of the rest of the neighborhood on that block. So, thank you.
Okay. All right, commissioners, any other final questions on this one? Okay, so let's begin our discussion. Commissioner Chu, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
So move.
Commissioner Jefferson, would you second that motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. So we'll begin our discussion, and the proposal again is to paint the windows and eager fire escape doors black to replace the doors with a metal door so that they can get a thinner profile. And then it's, in response to community board suggestion, aligning the styles with the transmitters above and modifying the cellar hatch door, and then installing the illuminated blade sign. And the applicant did present some historic examples of large illuminated blade signs in the neighborhood. So we'll begin our discussion. Commissioner Goldblum, would you start this one?
Sure. I think this is fine. I think the black is, may, it may not be, may not have historic pedigree that we can identify, but it's certainly consistent with the, the type and style of building and age of the building. And aesthetically speaking, it'll be a lot nicer, but that's kind of off topic. I think that the door being in metal is a better choice than the door being in wood and having a thicker style. So I can accept that. Also, the fact that, of the building as, as a relatively kind of utilitarian industrial building, for me, I don't think the wood has a intrinsic importance for that kind of building. I think that the blade sign is, is more than well supported in this district, although I'm kind of curious as to what the name is, but I, I assume that they, that their marketing people don't really need people to be able to read the name in order to stay at the hotel. So that's kind of their problem. I think it's, I think it's all fine.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Ginsburg.
So I think everything is fine. I would, and I'm not adamant about this, and if all the other commissioners agree with Commissioner Goldblum, that's fine. Have the upper windows be white because there's a clear historic precedent. And part of most, there are landmark districts that are totally homogenized. This is not one of them. Every building is different. So saying I want to relate to the buildings next door that have black windows when historically had a white window doesn't seem to me to be much of a justification. So not that it's super critical, but I would do white windows if the other commissioners agree.
Vice Chair Bland.
Well, if it comes down to windows, I'm in, I'm in the black camp. I agree, everything else is fine, and I don't need to go through it all. I think it was a very clear presentation of relatively minor tweaks to make this semi-forlorn building into quite a snappy, snappy new, new, new building. To me, paint color, unless it's egregiously terrible, and I guess that could be said is in the eye of the beholder, but, you know, pink or red or lavender or shocking orange or something, that's egregious. But whether it's white or black, you know, I mean, you know, things change over time. What might have seemed wonderful 30 years ago may not seem so wonderful today. Or 30 years from now, it might all go back and everything's a different thing. So to me, you know, landmarks have to be alive and be current. And so I don't look at that white window as a precedent necessarily. It's just what they did then. But it can certainly be something different now, and I think the black is very current for now, and I think this is what this building is attempting to be. So I'm in favor of that, and that's why.
Thank you. Commissioner Letfy.
I think this is a very well done project. Really thoughtful, very handsome. And I think the black is perfect, actually. And it works well, not only with the design, with that little icing on the top. And, you know, I love it. I love how it works with the, you know, the colored windows at the base, and I think they've done a great job. I really like the sign as well, even though I also can't read it. I'm assuming it's a placeholder.
Okay, thanks, Commissioner Chu.
Yeah, I think that the applicant is proposing something that's going to be a great improvement to this building. It looks derelict and a bit shabby, and it needs, we'll sharpen it up. I'm okay with the black. I'm okay with the steel doors. In fact, I think the steel doors are better than the wood doors. It may just be detailing wise, but messy in wood with the steel. I also think that in terms of color, I'm fine with black, but I would recommend just even looking at with staff a slightly off black, maybe like a gunmetal dark gray that might be matte, sometimes just pure black, and if it's glossy, I think it's not going to be the, the best look. So a dark, dark color, I think, is, is acceptable here.
Okay, Commissioner Jefferson.
I'll start with the steel door. I think that's appropriate. And I think the blade sign works well. And when I saw it the first time, the facade, I said, black was great, you know, why not? Then I saw the white facade. I said, that looks so happy. It's a happy building, and the black makes it unhappy. So, you know, I, I kind of, I was just looking at the joy, looking at the building there, so I could go either way.
Commissioner Chapin.
I'm in the white camp because I think that the historic designs just had something, it just sets it, sets this building apart in a way that the others, it doesn't blend in, but that was kind of the point I think of the original design. And then had a nice opposite. I won't reject this for the sake of hate if everyone else, which it appears the majority are for the darker color. And, you know, I think we can go either way. I, I don't think they believe in anything lighter. I think it would draw more attention to their building, and it'd actually be better for a business point of view, but
Okay. All right, and we still have Commissioner Master.
Yeah, so, yeah, I, I think the black windows are fine, even if the building is less happy. The metal doors are fine, and I'm also okay with a blade sign. So it's appropriate as presented.
Okay. All right. So I think, I mean, interesting discussion on color, and I think, you know, we've often seen Greek revival style row houses where people have wanted black windows, and we've approved it. And I think in that case, the white really has more to do with that style and type than maybe it does in this particular building, which is more of a very utilitarian arts and crafts style, but still very utilitarian. And so given the style and this particular building, I also could go along with the dark color, the black. And so I think we have enough to approve it as is, and Commissioner Goldblum, would you go ahead and make that motion?
Regarding 338 to 340 Bowery in the NoHo Historic District Extension, the application is to repaint windows, replace doors, modify openings, and install signage. I note that the building's style, scale, materials, and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the NoHo Historic District Extension. I recommend approval finding out the proposed work will not eliminate or damage any significant architectural features, that repainting the windows and fire doors at the upper floors black will unify the fenestration at the front facade and be in keeping with windows at similar large buildings within the historic district. The new metal entrance doors will match the configuration and details of historic wood doors, and that the changed materials will not detract from the historic character of the infill assembly, which includes metal multi light windows, that there is historic precedent for a large illuminated sign at the second floor of the Bowery facade. Therefore, the proposed internally illuminated projecting sign at the same location will be in keeping with the historic installation, and its vertical orientation and height will be well scaled to the facade, that the removal of plain brickwork, the base of the building to raise an existing sunken cellar stair and cellar entrance opening will provide a code compliant secondary means of egress for the ground floor commercial unit, and will only be minimally discernible within the streetscape, and that the proposed building, proposed, proposed work will not detract from the building or the historic district. or the historic district, apart from perhaps making it less happy.
Okay, thank you. Vice Chair Bland, would you second that motion?
Second.
John, will you call?
Chair Carroll?
Aye.
Vice Chair Bland?
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin?
Aye.
Commissioner Chu?
Aye.
Commissioner Ginsburg?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lutfi?
Aye.
Commissioner Master?
Aye.
None in favor, none opposed, the motion passes.
That's approved. Thank you. And we'll move to the next item.
Next item is public hearing number, item number eight, LPC 24-11905, an application for certificate of appropriateness in the Borough of Manhattan, Block 592, Lot 8, 122 Washington Place in the Greenwich Village Historic District. This is a late federal-style row house built in 1832 to 33. The application is to install a stoop gate.
Well, good to go. Hello, I'm David Erickson. I'm the architect at 122 Washington Place, and our firm is Pine Bureau. And I'm here to present a stoop gate for our project. So as you guys are aware, we are in the Greenwich Village Historic District. We are located a few blocks off of Washington Square Park. And within our neighborhood, we've experienced an increased foot traffic from Washington Square Park, and have had a lot of traffic on our actual stoop. And so this map here demonstrates approved stoop gates from the Landmarks Commission, and we have mapped them out here. And then whether a lot of them are on Waverly Place, which is just a block north of us, some on Barrow, Christopher Hudson, et cetera. And so just going around the neighborhood and looking for precedent to make sure that we're doing something that would be in kind to other approved stoop gates, as we've experienced this increased traffic and issues along the block. And so going through these examples of other wrought iron gates, often picking up on the wrought iron details of these, of these garden-level fences that you often see. So looking at our existing conditions, you can see this historic photo in 1942 of our project, which actually has since been brought back to, you know, what looks like a more historic appropriate addition. You can see here, our existing building used to have the parlor lever, parlor level door was actually replaced at one point, and the previous owners brought it back, as you can see here. And we're at like a late federal, early Greek revival-style townhouse, as you can see. And the building stepped up along the block as there's a slight topographic rise, as you can see from left to right here. Looking at the exact existing wrought iron details, you can see that these bullet finials and wrought iron pickets, there's little intermediate members down below, and it's a very thin gate. And then with our existing post and existing railing, we are looking to add a stoop gate that would blend in and be slightly recessed and be there until the traffic situation, the pedestrian traffic situation and loitering can be solved. Here's another picture, just so you can see a little bit more of a frontal view of this condition. And then we have drawn the existing neighboring elevation to show this slight shift in elevation as you move up from the neighbors, going from east to west. And then in large detail here, showing our existing gate and wrought iron fence work and our existing posts. So our proposal is just a new wrought iron gate at the stoop. We'd like it to be slightly below the height of our post and stay below the floor level of the house, but be mounted to the back of our wrought iron post right here. And we are looking at referencing the existing wrought iron detail work here, but just slightly modifying these so that our bullet finials could be a little cleaner and nicer. So you can see here, like, the actual projection of where our stoop lands from the garden-level wall here. And it's just a small detail showing how we were planning on mounting to the back of our posts with a little one and an inch and a quarter wrought iron post. Looking at this in more detail, we have, I'm sorry that the text is smaller, small on that screen, but we have like a welded-in key box here. We're maintaining the four-inch spacing for our pickets. We're looking at just matching the existing hinges that you see over on our other gate to the left. And just noting that we're having a three-quarter inch rail and frame that wraps around the gate. And we're just kind of losing some of these little details while trying to do as much in kind while being honest about the age of the work now. And one thing to note is that our immediate neighbor to the left, though they do not have an actual stoop, they have a gate just at this level. And one thing we are trying to do is make sure that our gate doesn't go above this floor level here, as our neighboring gate, our neighboring fence here is slightly below. So we're just trying to make sure this gate looks as recessed and as quiet as possible. And so here's one rendering that we've provided, showing how this gate sits recessed behind these posts here. You can see the height of our neighboring wrought iron fence there. And another view, just further back, just showing all the wrought iron work along Washington Place. And the owner, Tracy Dubb, is here right now, and she can answer any questions about her experience living at the property and the need for this gate.
All right, thank you. Right. Do you want to make a statement, or do?
Yeah, I'll just make a quick statement. Yeah. I'm Tracy. We've lived at this property for about a year and a half now. And I'm sure you guys know, because you've probably gotten other proposals, but the situation in the village right now is really tough with drug use and drug dealing, and it leads to a lot of loitering, a lot of like needles left behind, a lot of human extrements and noise. And I have two small kids, I have two and a half-year-old and a one-year-old. And I'm sure, you know, if any of you have kids in your life, you know, you can't really get them to like not crawl on the steps. And this gate would make a huge difference, because every morning we wake up and there's needles and there's stuff, and it's just been really hard. It's not going to solve everything. I've worked with local law enforcement. I go to all the meetings. I've been trying everything to avoid asking for this gate. But in this particular case, it would make a huge difference to our lives. And we're obviously trying to make it as non-offensive and, you know, inconsistent with everything as possible. So anyone has any questions?
Thank you very much. Yes, Commissioner Chapin, did you have a question?
Yeah, just looking at the picture, looking at the houses along there, it looks like the railings and fences look actually like this, they look like they were installed by the same, they almost look like exactly the same, aren't they? Pretty much. I mean, you have new posts on your building, but the rest of them, they
Yeah, these, they're all very similar.
But, you know, railing.
Yeah, everything starts from our property over. They all look very similar, but then to the left, they have a different detailing where they feature like a rounder, round detail.
Yeah, well, that makes sense, because they're, and the other question, I guess I just had in general. So none of those currently have a gate? Are your other neighbors, do you think?
Our immediate neighbor to the left has a gate, but they do not have a stoop, but they have a front, a gate. But then the other neighbors, there are two, the other two neighbors have a chain, like a silver, like what looks like a galvanized or chrome chain, as their answer to the solution, which is a lot less attractive.
The chain, we tried that. I think I'm maybe more motivated than some of my neighbors, because I have young kids. But my, yeah, my direct neighbor has the gate and the other townhouse owner. But Waverly, which is one block up, is a lot of it.
Yeah, I understand. Thank you.
Okay, other questions? Okay, let's see if we have any public testimony. I'll note there's no one in the room to speak on this item, so I'll turn it to Gregory to see if we have any remote participants.
Thank you, Chair Carroll. We have a few remote participants with their hands raised. The first we'll be hearing from is Chloe Gregoire from Village Preservation. Chloe Gregoire, I'm promoting you to panelist right now. And once you're a panelist, please unmute your line and state your name for the record. You'll have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Good day, Commissioners. My name is Chloe Gregoire, and I'm speaking on behalf of Village Preservation. Thank you for the opportunity to testify. We are sympathetic to the need for stoop gates as a modern-day safety feature at select locations in our historic district. In this case, we find the details of the proposed gate to be too utilitarian compared to the existing historic ironwork at the areaway. The detailing, especially at the top of the pickets, should be further refined so that the gate is more consistent. Yes.
Hmm, I don't think she can hear me.
I can hear you.
All right, I'm going to change back to attendee and hear from John Graham from the Victorian Society of New York. John Graham, I'm promoting you to panelist right now. Hmm. Okay. Okay, so we're going to try with one other participant, John Graham from the Victorian Society of New York. I'm promoting, oh, John Graham declined to be a panelist. I'm going to try with Lucy Levine from the Historic District Council. Lucy Levine, I've promoted you to panelist. Please unmute your line and state your name for the record. You have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Hi, Commissioners. My name is Lucy Levine. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can hear you.
I'll just say that I was able to hear Chloe on Zoom, so that might be something on your end. She was totally audible on Zoom. Okay, so, speaking though, for HTC, HTC opposes stoop gates in general because they're anti-urban. We further object to this one in particular because it floats awkwardly in the middle of the stoop and is not in keeping with the existing ironwork. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you so much for your testimony. Okay. I'm going to try one more time for Chloe Gregoire. Chloe Gregoire, I'm promoting you to panelist. Okay. And please unmute your line and state your name for the record.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, great. Hi, my name is Chloe Gregoire, and I'm speaking on behalf of Village Preservation. Thank you for the opportunity to testify. We are sympathetic to the need for stoop gates as a modern-day safety feature at select locations in our historic district. In this case, we find the details of the proposed gate to be too utilitarian compared to the existing historic ironwork at the areaway. The detailing, especially at the top of the pickets, should be further refined so that the gate is more consistent with its surroundings and features found throughout the historic district. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. And next up, okay, it does appear as though John Graham from the Victorian Society of New York is not with us anymore. Oh, no, he is up as a panelist. John Graham, are you with us? No, he doesn't. Okay, I'm going to try to change him back as an attendee and then bring him as an, as a panelist. Yes. Okay. Yes, I'm, I'm having difficulties bringing him back as an attendee. Okay, I think just worked. And John Graham, I'm asking you to unmute now? Hmm. Okay. Hello, okay. I assume? Hi, could you hear us, John? Okay, yeah, he does seem to be frozen. Right, yeah, I'm trying to bring him back and just let him speak as an attendee to see if that's easier. What happened there? Hmm. Okay. Yeah. Okay, now I don't see him on either. He might have logged off, and hopefully, hopefully he logs back on quickly. Let me see if I'm receiving any emails. Okay. No, I don't. Right, so I still don't see him on either list as an attendee or a panelist. Would you like for me to summarize or note that VSNY did send in testimony or give him? Okay.
All right, so Corey Harala with Preservation Staff, reading the statement from Victorian Society of New York regarding 122 Washington Place Greenwich Village Historic District. When we first looked at the presentation photographs, we were struck by the fact that we couldn't see any stoop gates. We couldn't tell from the presentation how many row houses with stoops there are on the block. And because several of the photos showing the adjacent houses were taken on the diagonal, we found it difficult to discern individual stoops, so we made a site visit. When we did so, we found out there are nine row houses with stoops built between 1832 and 1834 on the south side of this block. There are none on the north side, which is lined by small apartment buildings, stripped row houses, and St. Joseph's Church. We also found there are no existing stoop gates among these nine row houses. And we were pleased to discover that the owners of three of them, including number 128, the house closest to Seventh Avenue, have chosen to close their stoops with simple chains hung between the newel posts. This is exactly what the Commission and the Victorian Society have recommended for years. We've attached photos taken last Friday. The Victorian Society has testified against the installation of stoop gates at the 19th century, at 19th century row houses many times. They are a significant change to both the historic appearance of an individual house and to the streetscape. They introduce a very 21st century fortress, New York, quote unquote, feeling, which is the opposite of the open welcoming character of historic stoops. This is especially important on this block where there are now no stoop gates. We all know how one such change can create a domino effect. You gave it to them, now give it to me, quote unquote. We urge the Commission in the strongest way possible to deny this stoop gate and recommend the applicant to follow the path taken by three of their neighbors and install a chain closure. Thank you, Commissioners. End of statement.
Okay, thank you, Corey. And there are no other remote participants with their hands raised, so I will just note for the record that Manhattan Community Board Two recommends approval. And I will bring it back to you, Chair Carroll.
So we've heard testimony. Would you like to respond to the comments we've heard?
We'll just go down the list for the first testimony about We'll just go down the list. For the, the first testimony about how the gate sits awkwardly in the middle of the stoop, we were looking for a connection point that would recess our gate, so it wasn't the first thing you saw. If we mounted this gate one tread below, we would have new posts added next to the existing newel posts. And it would be more front facing, which if it was more favorable for landmarks and for the community, it would bring the gate down in height, but it would be more out in view. And so we chose this, this attachment point because of its recessed quality. So that was response to that, that first point. And as far as in response to using a chain is that those chains, they don't actually effectively stop the debris and the safety concerns. And they haven't, they haven't been stopping any of the, the disturbances along Washington Place. And when it comes to the map that we provided, those, those photos are actually taken from the New York Tax Assessor's website of the specific addresses. So that's our New York State government, which is, I thought was a lot more accurate than my iPhone. And each of those addresses were LPC-approved stoop gates. And we worked back and forth to get this presentation as accurate as possible. And I can answer any questions.
Right, and I think the owner said that you tried the chain and it wasn't successful for you.
Just say, we've, we've tried several chains. They, they move them, they sit around them, they step over them. It's not, unfortunately, it's not effective. It would be my preference. This is a lengthy process for us. And I understand the, you know, the ethos of, of an open urban environment, but I think especially in this block and in this neighborhood, we're sort of living through an extraordinary time. It's been getting worse and worse. And I think the city resources are not where the safety of the block needs it to be. My neighbors and I are in touch constantly about these concerns about cleanup efforts. In, in general, we're doing a lot to make the block more beautiful, but this is a real safety issue. This is a real quality, you know, of life issue. And I do think that the neighbors not having stoop gates is really more indicative of where they're at in their lives and, you know, ability to do this as opposed to a need for it. Yeah, that's, I'll just stop it there unless anyone has questions.
And one last question. The Village Preservation supported the stoop gate, but asked that the design be more replicative of the railing.
So if the bullet finials and the horse mine detail need one extra layer of flourish to be passed, I'm super open to work on adding one layer of detail. I think usually when it's a new build, when we're trying to add something that's in kind, we try to pick up on the proportion, but not add so much detail to show that this was done today and not 100 years ago. Just to be honest, it's something about the Charter of Venice and like, and in any adaptive reuse product I've worked on, we try to do things in kind, but not fake a previous work.
Got it. Okay, thank you. Any other final questions, Commissioners?
What I'm hearing is that the metalwork itself, there are three different types of designs. So this three different design for each one, the fence has one, the guardrail has one, the neighbors have another. The one that they designed is designed because of, they wanted it to be different.
So they're, they're matching the areaway railing except for at the finials. And the reason they did that is because they don't want to confuse history and they don't want it to, they want it to look the same, but slightly different to be of its own time, but said they would be happy to work with us if we wanted them to change the design. Yeah. Okay, it's, it's one philosophy is that when you add something new to a historic feature or context that you help do something to make it, to identify it as a modern feature. Okay, so if there are no other questions, yeah, no other questions, we'll go ahead and close the hearing. Commissioner Lutfi, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Chu, would you second that motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, so this is a discussion about a stoop gate and as you know, and as the applicant presented, the Commission has approved a number of gates at the bottom of stoops. In this particular district where there are commercial thoroughfares that cut through and the row houses are you know, sort of in that context or around the corner from commercial activity. And if, you know, if the gate has been found to be sort of harmonious with what's there or lightweight or transparent, not obscuring the door. And also, we have considered the streetscape and the other stoops on the street. So the applicant today is proposing this stoop gate of this particular design, and in this particular location, they thought it would be the most recessive. They, while there are no other gates on the other stoops on this block, I guess some have chains, but the applicant has tried chains and did not find that resolved the issues. So we'll begin our discussion. Commissioner Master, would you start this one?
Sure, I'd be happy to. Yeah, I understand the conditions that this homeowner is going through. And I think that the solution that she has, this stoop gate, is very modest. I think that she's thought through very well of how to place it discreetly and to blend into the streetscape. Even though there may not be any on this street itself, there certainly are in the neighborhood as they've indicated, so I can find this appropriate.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Ginsburg?
Given the location between two commercial streets, I think this makes sense. I also think what they're proposing, which is similar to the historic fence, but not exactly this is same to differentiate it is a good thing. And so I think this is appropriate.
Thank you. Commissioner Lutfi?
I think it's appropriate. I, I think I'm on the other side in terms of the finials that I don't really think it needs to be differentiated. I think it would look better if it was a little more cohesive. It's such a small area. It's not a big part of the project. And I immediately felt it looked a little bare. And so that would be my recommendation.
Okay, Commissioner Chu?
I'm, I think considering like Mark had mentioned, the location of this proposal and, and the testimony from the applicant about the need, I, I feel like they have a case here. I also think that this is really as minimal as you can do a gate. I, I don't find it that obvious that it's there. It's in line with the rest of the gates and the height is, you know, below the top of the, of the posts. I think those are all correct. I think that it's fine as, as shown. I actually don't want more ornament because it is supposed to be an entry. Putting ornament there is like it is a cage and you don't enter it. Ornament is on the sides. The gate should be more, or less ornamental piece, so it's good.
Okay, Commissioner Jefferson?
I accept the reason for the gate. And I accept the abstraction or perhaps whatever you call it, of the fence, it's fine, of the gate.
Okay, Commissioner Chapin?
I've seen a lot of proposals for stoop gates since in my time in the Commission and, you know, there's, we've always had a lot of concern about having stoop gates. At the same time, we have come to permit a, a lot of them because of the security issues, which we obviously sympathize with, living in city and understanding them. So I'm increasingly feeling like, you know, as we, we need to sort of try to develop a a sense of where we're going on this issue. We're clearly, we've clearly moved on this issue toward permitting them in general, I think, in many places. And you know, I think if we forget this one, we will no doubt get others on the same block that will request it. And because they're in an equal situation as far as we know. I personally agree with Commissioner Chu on this particular one. Looking at, you know, like all the examples where we permitted them, they're often very ornate and they look very pretty. But I think that, you know, our principle about it originally was we didn't want something to deviate from the original and we didn't want something that blocked your view of the door or the building in any way. So I wanted something as minimal as possible. And, you know, this is, I like the fact that this is very transparent and minimal and they've said it, it's a, yes, a little bit of an odd position because they have the newel posts, but they've set it back as, and I think, you know, I think that works. So I would support this as presented in this instance.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Goldblum?
Thanks. I accept the gate in this particular location. I know that it's heavily trafficked and tough. Even though generally I, I think they're, they are not something we should promote. I think that this should be brought down so that the top rail should align with the top rail of the fence. It will make it shorter, but I don't think the point of this is to be impenetrable by pole vaulters. I think it's just a, a general deterrent. And I think it'll still serve that purpose and it'll just harmonize a little better. I'm okay without the detail. Although I, I'm, I'm kind of on a genie's side on this one. I think that while the philosophy of differentiation is generally wise, in this case where it's such a small intervention, I think that differentiation will be mistaken for budget consciousness. And I, I personally would suggest that they look at, at having it match, but I, I wouldn't oppose it if, if they did not. But, you know, I think, you know, the whole idea of juxtaposition is that you can, and you can, you can discern intentionality from it. I don't think you'll get it here.
Okay, all right. So I think we do have six votes to approve it as is. You're certainly welcome to consider some of the suggestions about lowering it to align with the height of the adjacent rail. And, you know, even then, because it might align, maybe it does make sense to decorate the finials a little bit more, but also I think you've certainly heard comments from the people who do support it that they prefer, prefer something to be more transparent and less of, you know, the, you know, Commissioner Chu's point, which I agree with, I think, is that if you match the the areaway fence all the way across, it really is a designed barrier as opposed to having your ironwork and then just something really simple as to provide the barrier, to provide that separation. So, but I think we'll go ahead and make a motion to approve as is. Commissioner Master, would you do that?
Yep.
Thanks.
In the matter of LPC, dash, let's see, just a second. LPC dash 24 dash 11905, 122 Washington Place in the Greenwich Village Historic District. A late federal style row house built in 1832, 33. Application is to install a stoop gate. I note that the building's style, scale, materials, and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Greenwich Village Historic District. I recommend approval, finding that the proposed work will not eliminate or damage any significant architectural features, that the building's location between busy commercial thoroughfares has led to trespassing issues and safety concerns, that the proposed gate will be attached to two, to, attached to nonhistoric ironwork at the reconstructed stoop and will be easily reversible, that the design of the black finished metal gate will harmonize with other ironwork at the building, that the modest height and open quality of the proposed gate will not obscure or block views of any significant features of the building, that this streetscape features a variety of areaway and entrance ironwork conditions, including stoop gates at other building types and gates at row house entrances where stoops were moved. Therefore, the presence of a stoop gate at this building will be in keeping with the varied streetscape. And that the proposed work will not detract from the special architectural and historic character of the building, the streetscape, or the historic district.
Okay, thank you. And Commissioner Ginsburg, would you second that motion?
Second.
John, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll?
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin?
Aye.
Commissioner Chu?
Aye.
Commissioner Ginsburg?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum? Mr. Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lutfi?
Aye.
Commissioner Master?
Aye.
In favor, not opposed, the motion passes.
All right, that's approved. Thank you. We have one more order of business before we close the hearing.
Yes, we're going to be reading into the record the final item that was on the agenda for today, item nine, LPC 24 dash 09829. Application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan, block 1199, lot 39, 8 West 86th Street in the Upper West Side, Central Park West Historic District. A Georgia Revival Style Row House signed by Taylor and Levi and built in 1908. That application is constructed rear yard rooftop additions and alter the main entrance in areaway. This will not be presented today. We'll be reading it into the record and the planning on bringing this back next Tuesday to be presented on 9/17/24.
And while we will take testimony after the presentation next Tuesday, we do want to ask if there's anyone present who wishes to testify today.
Okay, would anybody like to click the raise hand button and provide testimony? Noting that there are no hands raised, we will wait until next week.
Great. Okay, so that concludes our public hearing today. Thank you all, and we'll see everybody next Tuesday.